Board meeting in order. Please stand to be pledged, ladies and gentlemen.
Ladies and gentlemen, certified United States of America, as to republic for sustenance, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Yes, here.
I'm here.
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 Okay. Item number four, I'll accept the motion to approve. You give one of the executives. Now? Then you have to change the, uh, you have to change the agenda to do that.
Do it now?
Do what?
Can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to change the executive session to the other night.
I don't know, I guess. No, 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 you can't make a motion, okay? You make a motion and then she has to second. No, she said I move.
I'd like to make a motion to move executive session to the other night.
Well, what you're making a motion is to change the agenda. No, you're making a motion to change the agenda, to, um, to, uh, change the rules. To change the agenda, but that's okay, I understand what you're saying. And then, um, are you seconding it, trustee Brewer?
Yes.
It was moved by. Trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Brewer to, um, change the agenda to add the executive session at the, um, end, which will be... It'll be item I, eleven I. There you have the motion ready to question. Madam clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept an emotion to approve the minutes for the board meeting April ninth, twenty nineteen.
So move. I'm sorry, April ninth, that wasn't here, I'm sorry. Sorry. Anxious. That's okay, so move. I'll second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Bell, and any questions? Madam clerk.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
I'll stay.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
I'll stay.
Trustee Bell?
I'll stay.
Okay, abstentions go with the, uh, majority, but your majority is two, so the motion is carried.
Science, Todd, Brewer.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, for the committee of the whole meeting minutes for June fourth, twenty nineteen. So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Brewer, any questions? Madam clerk, please call the board.
Trustee Grant? Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes, and I just want it noted that I did give you the corrections, so, um, I'm approving these with corrections.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Williams?
Yes, also approving with corrections.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
For the record, our motion is carried.
Typos.
Oh, they were typos?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion for the committee of the whole meeting for June eighth minutes, for June eighth, twenty nineteen. June, I'm sorry, June eighteen, twenty nineteen.
So move. Second.
Removed by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee. Trustee Williams? Bell? Okay. Trustee Brewer. Any, I need, are there any questions?
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes, with corrections.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, with corrections.
Dale?
Yes.
Brewer? Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Again, are these just typos or are there things that changed in the minutes itself?
Just typos.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the minutes for the board meeting for the date of June twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. I accept the motion.
So move. Second.
Moved by trustee Brewer, seconded by trustee Todd, any questions?
Trustee Todd?
Yes, with corrections.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, with corrections.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Oh, yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Okay, again, are these just typos? That is...
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment, our question comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter about the business of Salk Village. These speakers given one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies, or rebuttals. I'll listen to all comments and I'll respond after our comments are given. Please state your name when you come up.
Pat Couch. I'm going to speak about a couple of things that are involving myself as well as our village. There's been some incidents at my home, which you all know about the pit bull. That pit bull is still there, by the way. However, over the past year and a half, almost two years, that pit bull has been a problem. That home has been a problem. Those kids have totally, I can't say destroyed my yard, but they have done a lot of damage to my home. This past Friday, there was an incident of early Saturday morning, I can't even remember. There was gunshots at that home. Four thirty in the morning, four twenty eight, actually, to be exact, there was a car pulled up alongside my house. I heard the noise, so I got up. I went to the bathroom and as I'm coming back, I noticed my cameras. I see headlights along that side of my house. So I watched the camera. There was an individual got out of that car, went to the front of his car, and picked up something out of the street. Within seconds after that, I heard six rapid-fire gunshots. This is on the side of my bedroom. Needless to say, it was a very unnerving situation. For our police, they worked out their butts off, and I have to thank the police for what they did. They were there the better part of a day. Now, that home, the lady refused to let our police go in to search for that weapon, even though I saw them go back in that house. That incident leaves me unnerved that I have to live next door to a house with these kind of problems. To me, it's considered a drive-by because someone else heard that individual that was in that car shoot first at that home. So the man that came out of that house and shot six times, rapid-fire, was shooting back at that car that went down the street. Then, that is one issue. And as you know, on Friday, we were in court. While we were in court, I'm sitting there and my phone pinged twelve times. Those twelve pings on my phone were from the mayor's daughter, Erica. And I have some papers that I am going to read, some of the nasty stuff that was posted to my website. And I know you don't want to hear it, but this is...
What I'm telling, what I'm about to tell you is, and I said it before, I said it every meeting, if it gets personal, I will not go into further. And this, if it gets personal, there will be no more questions.
I want to read what was sent to me.
I'm trying to tell, okay, I'm, 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 I'm trying to explain to you. I've said this many times, so if you want to take a chance and make it personal, then there will be no more questions or comments after this, and that'll be it. I've said this for the last month and a half. So, if you want to risk that...
I want this audience to hear this one particular comment that was made to me regarding my deceased son.
This is not, I, this is not for that. This particular forum, this village right now, where we're doing, supposed to be doing business, if you have a complaint, quite naturally, we can all, you can always complain to the police department or whatever. But to make this an open forum, ma'am, I will not, I will not entertain that. I'm just, I'm just telling you now, I said this before, this is nothing you...
Well, I've already passed out the reading material, so if the audience, anybody would like to have this, I would like the police to have it also. Thank you.
Frank Williams. I think I talked to you about those bathrooms and things like that and the water fountain out there, but it's one of the things that I'd like to know. How many bank accounts do Salk Village have? Where the banks are located? Who names are on those banks? How much money is in each one of those banks? And I don't want you handing it to me saying it's confidential. Whoever give it to me, I want to let you know that I'm going to share it with other people. So this is something I need to know. And the second thing is, I know you don't want to talk about these things with her, but Pat is very upset about this stuff being done to her, and it's not fair. I know you don't want to talk about it, but we have to get this kind of stuff out of this village. It don't need to be here.
Ready? Ready?
Yes.
Is it on? Okay. My name is Winona Ayers. I address my comments and questions to this administration. One, I understand that someone wants to have a truck repair shop in the location of Carlisle Estates. If this is correct, then why haven't the residents been informed? Two, the property all around Carlisle Estates is zoned as R1 residential. If you change the zoning, which the residents of Carlisle Estates are against, all the property be changed to C3 commercial, which is not developed at this time. I meant to say, will all the property be changed to C3? Three, what environmental impact would a study show on surrounding residential sites, such as Carlisle Estates, Candlelight, Weatherstone, and Linwood Mobile Home Park, with a truck repair shop located within the areas of homes? If any one of you, and I apologize for saying it this way, if any one of you feel that having a truck repair shop is a residential area is a good thing, then why not put it behind your homes or area where you live? All the homes in Carlisle Estates pay property tax as we own our land. Our roads are defloresable, haven't been done in over thirty-three years. Pod holes everywhere. Several homes will be considered a nuisance by your own ordinance guidelines, but we, the residents, never get a fair treatment in our area and has been neglected for several administrations, including yours, and we continue to be harmed. Once again, we, the residents of Carlisle Estates, will do all we can to stop the harm. I urge all trustees to vote no on changing the zoning use permits from R1 residential to C3 commercial, and I thank you.
Mr. McCullough. I want to know when my driveway going to be finished. It's almost Thanksgiving again. Mr. McCullough, I want to know when my driveway going to be finished.
The mayor responds to all questions after all comments have been made. So if you have additional, you can continue on.
No, that's it?
That's it?
That's it? I guess I got with three Thanksgiving.
He asked for his address.
Okay, um, I guess that's all of them. As far as the pit bull, I'm sure you have the detective is here, he heard all, he's heard this before. I'm sorry that there was gunshots near your home, how can we stop that? I'm sure the police department is, when they, this, I'll put it this way, they're on top of it. Now, as far as the pit bull still being there, I don't, I don't know why, I don't know what happened, I don't get into the police aspect of it, uh, the, um, legal aspect of it. I thought the bull, the dog was gone myself, as many times as been talked about. Again, the gunshots by your home, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that, that's, it shouldn't, no one should have to live like that. I wish there was a way we could find and stop all gunshot period. But I haven't, I haven't found out how you, how we can do that, but, um, I'm sure, listening to you today, that, um, the police department will be prepared for that type of situation, not just your area, all areas in the village. Um, as far as the, the bathrooms are concerned, I was just in there. There's something I've already talked to several people about what we can do to kind of, um, do something about that. And, um, that's, that's something that, that, um, I guess it would be our hard work, and then, I've gone in there sometimes where we have to sometimes come in and put water down the drains, keep the smell out from the sewers. As far as the, um, soap dispensers, I think they were remounted, if not, I'm sure they will be, hopefully tomorrow. And, um, as far as how many bank accounts, sir, there's no way I would know, but I can find out, and I'm sure the people that, um, does know have taken that information down tonight and be able to get back with you. Uh, how much, how much money is in each account and how many accounts we do have. As far as the truck repair shop, there was a person asking about bringing one in right there on Thirty, right by Carlisle Estates. There's a process that goes through, they just don't come in and, uh, open up a shop just because that's, that's what they want to do. They have to, first of all, go before the zoning board to change the zoning. So the zoning has been changed, so I don't know where people are getting that they're going to open up. They have to go before the zoning board. Zoning board comes back to the village and makes a recommendation, and then the village votes on it. So you came and gave your, uh, I'm sure at the zoning board, they're going to be putting out, um, notices to everyone that lives around that area to come out to the zoning board meeting to express your opinion about having it changed, and it won't change the whole area. It won't change the homes to C3, they'll change the area that they're talking about to, to C3. The homes will still have to be in R1. So, but there's a process, when that, when it gets to that point and they're interested and it gets to the zoning board, there'll be a zoning board meeting, there'll be a notice sent out to the zoning board meeting. Come at that time and express your concerns, nay, yea, or nay, in regards to that, and then, um, it will go from there, you get a chance to, to talk about or to give your opinion of why you feel, um, you don't think it should be in your area. The driveway, um, I can't give you a date, but I would, I'll do with, I do know your number, I do know your house, I do know everything about this particular, uh, home. Um, I'll find out tomorrow to get a date. Uh, I don't know exactly, we've got so many things that are going on, and in that area, we have, um, a lot of, um, construction going on in the streets, so not just your driveway, but as you stated, it's been like that for, for quite a while now, so, um, I'm sure that, that it's, it's, it's in the, um, plans to have it done as soon, as soon as they can get to it. So, but I will give you, sir, a, a roundabout date within a few weeks, and I, and I'll give you that information. I, I know how to contact you and I'll get it. With that being said, next order, number six. The mayor's report. Only thing I have right now, um, is we're, um, currently, if you live around Twenty Twenty First Street, you see that the construction is going on in the street. Some people have the curbs cut or whatever, but there's a lot of construction going on. That's going to be going on for, I would say, another month, because they're trying to wrap it up before the snow hits, so, it'll be a little bit inconvenient right there, but I'm sure Kevin will probably elaborate on that during this report. But right now, there's, there's things that are going on, and, um, Twenty Twenty First Street was done last year, it was held up. We're trying not, we're trying not to inconvenience people, but sometimes it does inconvenience people. There will be a, um, town hall meeting next Wednesday, week from tomorrow, here at Village Hall, seven o'clock. Hope those all come out, ask questions, hear what's going on, and, uh, hopefully, um, we can keep it the way it was at the last meeting, um, questions, answers, and, um, move on and, um, find out what's happening and find out how these residents feel. That's basically what it's for. Come out and express your opinions, express your concerns. Okay, um, next item, the village clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one thing that I would like to, uh, announce to the trustees and everyone else within earshot, and that is, on August the twenty-seventh, we will be having a partnership meeting at three o'clock PM. That partnership meeting is really, normally, it's for the entities that, uh, the tax embodies, rather, that support our students. However, it has grown to be just a little bit more than that, and this special meeting, I would like to invite any and everyone out, especially those who have a desire, that burning desire, the willingness, the capability of serving on the United States Census, um, Complete Count Committee. We will have a representative from that agency who will go through each and every organization's responsibility and what would be expected, and will be making of, an appeal to make certain that every organization that typically has been found to produce a wonderful result for the census, uh, he will be here to go through and walk through with each and every one of you. After he finishes, then we will move on into our regular partnership meeting and exploring the types of things we will be providing and doing for students and the community this year. One thing that I know that we will be planning for, I mentioned it before, and that is the November luncheon, which we're saying is a Thanksgiving luncheon, even though it's before then, it is for people who are homeless, people who have little or no family, and for seniors, and basically, anyone that would like to be here with us. And I do have very, very good news. We have been out soliciting, but thank you to, uh, Mr. Farmer, who introduced me to a Masonic group. Well, they were so wonderful that they reached out to a couple of other Masonic groups and/or the ladies group, I'm sorry. And they're providing all of the food for one hundred individuals. So our committee will only be responsible for the decorations and, um, paper goods and things along that line. So I was very excited to get that call this past weekend. Don't you all think that that's wonderful? So, really, we just need your bodies to come out and help serve, because we will be serving, this will be sit-down for our guests. The other thing that we will be talking about on the twenty-seventh, we're beginning to move into the, um, Christmas or the holiday cheer, which is the food basket giveaway. And so we would love to have your input as well. And then, we also have room on the agenda for any activity that you think that would really greatly support our youth and the village as a whole. So I'm inviting you to come out at three o'clock, August twenty-seventh. Hopefully, I've seen some people writing that date down, and we can expect to see you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I forgot, I forgot to, um, introduce our village administrator, Mr. Christopher Williams. Would you please stand some right to the yard? And you will be giving reports starting next, um, board meeting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm village engineer, Mr. Tim Zirner. Thank you, mayor. Just following up on the mayor's reports, uh, regarding an update on the Two Hundred Twenty First Street resurfacing project. All concrete work is completed, as well as all driveways, except for the two that will be completed once the broken water main is repaired. Storm sewer also needs to be repaired, and grinding is expected to start this week, and paving should follow soon afterwards. And that concludes my report, thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Your attorney, Mike, uh, Mike McGrath.
Uh, thank you, mayor. No report, I would follow up, though, uh, there was a comment from the woman about, um, the truck repair shop. I had sent out an email because I was contacted by, uh, an attorney that represents the group that's, would like to, uh, possibly do that project. They were asking if they can go before the board prior to going to the zoning board, just to see if they get some feedback from the mayor and the board to see if it's, uh, something that, uh, is possible, not to give approval, but, you know, that it's something you're going to entertain. Uh, if not, if it's complete thumbs down, they would appreciate that response right away, rather than spending legal fees and engineering and, uh, and planning costs. So, uh, one of their attorneys I've dealt with in the past is a retired judge, so I, I just passed it along to you, and he was looking to see if they could come before the board, either at the committee of the whole meeting or the next village board meeting, so I don't know how you feel about that.
It would be fine after the next village committee meeting, right? If they, if they want to, do they want to come next Wednesday? I mean, next Tuesday? Are they ready to come next Tuesday?
Yeah, I think it would be one of their attorneys, and then the, uh, uh, the main principal person can just give, you know, an overview of what they're proposing and get some feedback.
Okay, well, then, uh, next Tuesday, we can, we'll have, yeah, for next Tuesday, our regular committee meeting at seven o'clock.
Okay, I'll let him know, and maybe you were correct, I mean, nothing can be done until it goes for a zoning change, and it's, it's a long process that will take months and months. Thank you.
Uh, treasury report, Mr. Anthony Fitch.
Thank you, mayor, board, madam clerk. I passed out earlier the cash balance in the account, um, as of today, and counted to answer the gentleman question earlier, Salk Village have roughly eighteen and nineteen bank accounts. Um, I'm in the process of streamlining, streamlining those accounts. I'm in the process of streamlining, streamlining those accounts. Currently, we have $2,894,339 of unrestricted funds. We have $1,083,806 of restricted funds. As far as the breakout of that, you guys have that on your sheets as to which account those funds relates to, and I can address those questions later. Also, roughly, we have enough money in account to cover four, four and a half months of operation expenses, such as payroll and accounts payable. And that concludes my treasury report.
Thank you. As you said, we go to our number seven, financial and administration. Again, Mr. Anthony Finch.
Also, in front of you, Board, Madam Clerk and Mayor, you have two accounts payable lists for disbursement. The first one is a list of vendors that was not approved for payment on July 23rd. That remaining amount of unpaid invoices is $65,943.17. You also have disbursement as of this week, August 13th, in the amount of $177,444.47. In addition to those two accounts payable, disbursement items, we have payroll that is due for this Friday. I'm sorry, that was paid out for August 2nd in the amount of $125,830.56. That concludes my finance, financial department report.
Okay. Next report is fire department report, Mr. Captain Dennis Sennaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fire department responded to 35 calls for service for a period from July 19th through August 8th. Most serious one was overturned semi-steel waste truck on Route 394. That incident closed down the highway for about five hours. We'd like to thank everyone who came out last week for the national night out, and we hope everyone enjoyed our demonstration. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police report will be given by Detective Jack Evans.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From July 30th to, to day at three o'clock PM, we had a total of 457 calls for service with 15 arrests. And that will conclude my report.
Um, I have a D. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Wellen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the engineer mentioned, we're completing our water main, uh, our water main repair replacement, five sticks of water main, a fire hydrant, and a valve. Then after, the concrete company will come back and finish the curb line and the driveways at this location, and then they'll start the grinding. At this point, right now, grass cutting in Salk Village has slowed down enough that we can catch up on some other work. Right now, the biggest issues we're gonna have is some of the pondments. Our bush mower and our boom mower will be out cutting those locations. Some of them haven't been cut all year, but that's how wet the bottoms still are. Pop hole repairs are ongoing on the south side of town. We had some calls for some large holes, those were repaired today. They will be out the next few days, at least patching up some of the small work, some of the cracks in the middle of the roads and continuing to the end of the week. The boom truck, we've had a few issues with our boom truck. We had it certified, we had brought it back, we had an issue with some levers that a part broke during the working of it, that was repaired. And then we ended with a leak on one of the lift cylinders. In order to fix this lift cylinder, it had to be replaced with a brand-new part, it cannot be maintained or repaired due to the, the safety of it. That boom cylinder's been replaced, so we will be out doing the treason, the streetlight work that has been behind. The last item I have is chipping will begin September 2nd. All branches have to be out by September 8th to be picked up. We will be out probably for two and a half weeks of that pickup, so if you don't see us right away, we will be by to pick up. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Community Development and Economic Development, our interim director, Ms. Tanya McFarlane.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to talk about the IDA grant. We, we need to, you know, do the resolution so that we can have, continue to have funding for the IDA grant for the round four, and I think we're gonna do that tonight. But with that funding of $75,000, we can integrate with the ProChamp system, which I've talked about previously, and actually be able to send citations directly to the banks, as well as the private homeowners, so that we can use, utilize that $75,000 to actually demo some of the houses. So that's one of the things that's on our agenda. Grass cutting and vacant homes. I want to thank everybody who did let me know which houses needed the grass cut. Hopefully, you know, everything was taken care of, and if not, again, see me after the meeting, and we'll make sure that the, the grass is cut in, at the properties that you guys see. The Community Development Department, along with the Finance Department and Water Department, found 35 houses that did not have occupancy or water going to the house, but there were actually people living in the houses. So we're going to come together and figure out a plan as to how we're going to stop people from getting straight pipe water and living in houses without occupancy certificates. I did meet with Cook County Economic Development Department around bringing a grocery store to the village. One of the stores that they kind of talked about was a Food for Less, so we're working on it. I don't know which grocery store it would be, but I want the community to know that I am diligently working on getting a grocery store here in the, in the village. That concludes my report. Thank you.
For the trustees, standing committees and comments, Public Safety Committee trustee, Gary Bell.
Our next meeting will be the 20th, it'll be Tuesday, 11:00 AM. I'm here to return it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Public Service Committee trustee, Bernice Tru.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor, to address Tanya's community development person, Mr. Finch and Cynthia, and I have drafted ordinance for rehab water, which will address a lot of these problems that Cynthia's talking about. We'll present that next week, just to let you know we're working on it, and it's finished, and, you know, we'll present that next week. In addition, I would like to know, where can I get enough information, more information about this truck stop that wants to come here and change, and, and move into the Carlisle State? Because it's a closed, a small and closed area. I don't understand why a truck stop would want to move there, but any way I can get any additional information, you know, how many trucks, we talking about, stuff like that? You know, so when they're, get the public hearing when they come in and ask for the change, zoning change, or if they're gonna come in, you know, residents need to be notified of what's going on over there in the Carlisle Estates.
Okay, first of all, what we talked about is not a truck stop.
A truck repair place.
And second of all, they're coming next Wednesday to the committee meeting, I'm sorry, next Tuesday at the committee meeting to give you all the information about it before they go to the zoning committee. So at that time, you can ask questions and, and everything. The location is right there as you go into IRC. That property that's to the east of where the entranceway of Transportation Drive is what they're looking at. So, again, it's not a truck stop, but it is in that, in that area right there, but I don't know all of the ins and outs, but there will be somebody here next Tuesday at the committee meeting to explain what is they're trying to do.
The question is, is there any way we can get information before next Tuesday to take a look at it? Any, anybody we could call or anything?
They're gonna come and give you all the information then to.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't have any information. I mean, why would they, they're gonna explain everything to us next Tuesday before they go to the zoning board, to see if they, that's the reason for them to come in, to see if it's feasible for them to come. So at that time, and the information that you have, any question that you have, I'm sure you can ask at that time, but right now, there's nothing that I have in hand other than they want to come out and do that.
That's it? I'm sorry, that's it in my report?
Budget and Finance Committee, trustee Roger Grant.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two comments. First comment is that still need to pass appropriations as soon as possible. My second comment is that I did have the chance to send the village administrator and the finance director a copy of some financial policy procedures that we would like to go over. We will probably review them sometime this week, maybe early next week, and then eventually we bring them to the board, where we can get their opinions as well, and then hopefully we can pass them, so that we have some processes and procedures in place. That's all I have.
Thank you. Housing and the Government Relations Committee, trustee Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Committee will meet tomorrow night at seven o'clock here in the boardroom. That concludes my report.
Okay. Orders Review Committee trustee, Todd.
I have nothing at this time.
Public Events Committee trustee, Deborah Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank the police department and the fire department and all the elected officials and all the residents that came out for national night out. It was a good collaboration, and we totally enjoyed the fire department burn, the police department demonstrations, as well as Chase and Marshall from Paw Patrol characters. We also enjoyed dunking the chief in the dunk tank. So it was a great event, and this collaboration will continue, and we hope next year to make it even bigger and better. Second of all, we started a Salk Village Public Events Committee Facebook page today, so hopefully, we can let more people know when events are happening, so we can get better turnout. So that page was created today, so we're asking you to please like the Salk Village Public Events Committee Facebook page that was just rolled out today. The committee has decided on a firm date of the second Monday of every month at 5:00 PM, that's when our meetings will be. On the back table, there's several pages, and the first thing is the Public Events Committee calendar. I just find it easier if we place all the events on one calendar, because there's gonna be a lot of flyers coming out from different committees once events start happening. So this will not only be our events, but it will be the events that the village is doing. The Public Events Committee is not going to do all of the events personally, but they will basically know who's having an event and work around, we can work around each other's events. But this Saturday is gonna be a busy day. We have Commissioner Donna Miller, sixth county, sixth Cook County, sixth district, and the Cook County Sheriff, Tom Dart, along with Salk Village, we're hosting a recycling event from nine to noon. Basically, you have to enter through the driveway here, they want us to do a roundabout, so you enter right through here, the front door here, come around to the side and exit that way, so there'll be a truck there for recycling items. And you can recycle prescription drugs, please remove your labels. You can, there's documents shredding, they won't be shredding on-site, they will remove the papers and shred it offsite, but it's Cook County Sheriff's Department that is taking your documents. And electronics and televisions, the only stipulation is one television per household. So please just bring one TV, everything else is acceptable. Cell phones, any type of fax machines, printers, whatever you have at home, feel free to bring all that, and this is not limited to Salk Village area. You won't be asked for your ID, except in the case that you have more than one TV. And immediately following the recycling event is the robotics workshop. Now, this is pretty exciting, but we only have five kids signed up so far, so I need you all to try to encourage anybody between the ages of nine to 13. It's from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM in the senior center, it's the robotics workshop, and what we're gonna do is we're gonna build an actual robot. So it's a camp that offers hands-on opportunities to build and program Lego Mindstorm robots. This is pretty exciting, so I'm gonna have to go out and grab some kids, make sure we have 20 kids between now and Saturday. There's also a parade application back there, if you know any organizations that might want to participate in the Labor Day Parade. We're working again this year with parade chairman Ed Myers. We've sent this application out to several local businesses, elected officials, and any other people, like the schools, that we think that might want to participate. You don't have to have a business or be an elected official to participate. If your family wants to participate, that's fine, too. So we have these applications in the back, the senior committee, any committee, anybody who wants to participate. This is the first parade in a while, so we want to make it a big one. So all you have to do is fill this out, there will be a waiver that you have to sign of, you know, absolving the village of any responsibility, but in the meantime, if you want to be in the parade, this has to be filled out by August 26th and returned to me. And I believe, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory council, chairman, Mr. Andrew Farmer.
Yes, Mayor, trustees. Our next meeting for the senior advisory council is Thursday, September 12, 2019 to 5:00 PM, all are welcome. Please don't forget our game night every first and third Friday in the senior center, which and other games are available. We're having a day at the casino coming up on August 21st from 8:00 AM to 3:30 PM. The cost is $35 per person. The money was actually due for August 9th, but I understand it's been an extension to the end of this week, the Friday. Please see Carol Coleman, our treasurer, for more information on how to pay for the casino trip. Also, come join our seniors, we have our first potluck, September 18, 2019 in the senior center. For RSVPs and what meal you're bringing, please contact Deborah Coney at 708-710-4564. And we do have some flyers on the, in the back of the room. Also, just want to ask the village clerk, is there a partnership meeting tomorrow also? Partnership meeting, is that only on the 27th? I don't know here, on my calendar, it's 14.
All of them for the 27th, rather than have one meeting tomorrow, another next week, and the other one the 27th, all three will be combined.
Okay.
We will see on the 27th.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, that concludes my report. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next item, new business. The first one is a motion to approve payroll, but that was approved, so it would have to be accounts payable and disbursed for July 23, 2019. How is it able? First item in the state is to be this accounts payable and disbursed for July 23, 2019. I accept the motion to approve. All right, $65,943.17 for that disbursement for July 23.
You said $65,000.
So motion.
There's second. The motion is, still, wanted to let everyone know that the motion is failed. However, in those bills, there were some people there that do business with the village have written me and told me if they don't get bills to get their payment, they will cease doing business with it, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I be recognized?
Sure.
The board was instructed that we have to let the motion to approve accounts payable fail before we can make another motion. Are you saying?
I said, I said the motion was.
Then, and being recognized.
And that's what I just said, that, that there was some bills in that, but I mean.
Exactly. So what I would like to do is to make a motion to table Crown 3G, 3D Development for $13,700, and a motion to table Dr. Strader by removing invoice number 1057 for $510. Yes. Well, I'm tabling, making it one motion. Table those two items from the accounts payable. Second.
Before I ask for a question, in regards to Crown 3, what is it that you're looking for, so they?
Mr. Mayor, there's not supposed to be any discussion when we table. We got letters from the attorney that told us how to properly handle these procedures.
I'm asking so I can be able to tell Crown.
When, when a motion to table is made, there's supposed to be no discussion.
I'm asking a question, though.
We could speak privately, I've already emailed you on this, these concerns, so if you want to speak again, we could speak privately.
I want to know why are we tabling that particular, I know why you're tabling.
Mr. Attorney, is there supposed to be discussion after a motion is seconded, made and seconded for a table?
I have a question.
Thank you.
Okay, again. We gonna play this? We're going to play this game, I guess. But I still would like to be able to go back to this vendor and tell this vendor why this board doesn't want to pay them. That's the only thing I'm asking. Now, if you say privately, I don't know what privately means. We, we, we're doing this in the open. Everybody wants transparency. I want some transparency.
Open Meetings Act violation.
Pardon me?
Open Meetings Act violation.
What does that mean?
That means you're not supposed to discuss it.
I, I would like to know, so therefore the public doesn't need to know why we're not paying this bill? Because you don't want to tell them, the public doesn't need to know why we're not paying this particular bill. I just need to know, to be able to tell this vendor why they're not getting paid. That's all. So nobody wants to answer that, so we're just going to not pay them. It was moved by trustee, um, Williams II by trustee Todd Bell. Bell, I'm sorry, that the payment of Crown Three in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars and the payment for Dr. Alicia Strader in the amount of five hundred and ten dollars at this time be not paid. You heard the motion, are you ready for the question? Any questions?
Uh, when will it be paid?
When there's, my understanding is there's no debate, no discussion. It's called a roll. Mr. Attorney, would you clarify?
Why, the attorney's not running the meeting.
The attorney is supposed to make sure that we run the meetings according to the Robert Rules of Order, Open Meetings Act.
But this, but still, you cannot, so we don't question motions now? There's no question in motion, so.
Mr. Attorney, could you send another memo out to the board tomorrow?
You what is that mean? Madam, madam, um.
You don't need to argue, Mr. Mayor.
I'm not arguing, I'm asking questions. You're arguing.
I'm done.
I, I, okay, but you, but you're asking questions. I, so we're not able to ask this question and put it as a record of why we're not paying this bill? So we don't do this, pull it out to the sky, don't pay it and just move on? There's no, you cannot tell this particular vendor why we're not paying you just because we don't want to or whatever, we're not paying. That's the only question I'm asking. And if that's the problem, then we got a problem. Because we do that now, so when every person, so therefore from now on, when a person makes a motion, when a person makes a motion, I shouldn't ask for a question. All I'm doing is asking why we're, that's simple, why we're not paying. That's all. That's the only question, so I can be able to go back and tell. Why is there a problem with that? Okay, hold on.
Trustee Williams?
Yes, table.
I'm sorry, I, I, I need clarification.
Okay, I made a motion to table two items. The motion was seconded. I know that there's been a lot of discussion that wasn't supposed to take place, but we are making a motion to table these two items from the accounts payable. And I'm saying yes to that motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Dezen.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
I don't need your comment.
I know, I'd like to make another motion.
Are you going to let me, are you going to let me at least ask this?
Yes.
Or you want to, or you want to go ahead and say something else?
No, you go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
You know, you really take the meetings out of context.
Well, no, I'm not, because I asked a question. I asked a question, why you don't want to pay a bill?
Yes.
Motion is carried to table those two.
Now, may I make a motion, Mr. Mayor?
You made one already.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the rest of the invoices on the accounts payable, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. I make the motion that we approve the rest of the invoices on the accounts payable for July 23rd.
So move, second.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I know you want to be, but right now, I'm still the mayor, so. So, so you can't, you, you can't call for a motion. That's something that I, I mean, if you want to make a motion, you just did. But after that motion comes a second, not another motion. So after the motion that you made to pay the rest of the accounts payable, there should be a second. Not another motion. No, Zula made a motion. She made second, so that's what I go. She made the motion, so it should be second.
Well, second then.
No, she made second. If you're going to do it right, trustee, do it right.
No, no, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, go right ahead. And there's no discussion, it does it right.
The motion for the accounts payable, uh, for July 23rd, uh, minus those two items that were just pulled out, it was moved by trustee, uh, Williams II by trustee Brewer. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Dezen.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Motion to approve payroll, accounts payable and disbursement for August 13th, 2019. I'll accept the motion. In the amount of, oh, okay, in the amount of three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars and three cents.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee, um, Grant, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Yes, my question is why do we have an invoice on here for an attorney that costs six hundred dollars an hour when we're constantly being told that we're, we're, uh, going overrunning on our attorney bills and we're wasting money on attorney's bills when all we're trying to do is run the village back to where it should be with proper ordinances and resolutions in place? We have an invoice on here for two thousand, eight hundred, fourteen dollars and sixty-nine cents for an attorney that charges six hundred dollars an hour to represent the mayor and the village in a FOIA case. We did pass an ordinance after the fact that says we can no longer have an attorney that costs more than two hundred dollars. However, this six hundred dollars per hour was never approved by the board. It was approved by the mayor and one trustee from the prior administration. This is excessive and I will not, for one, I'm stating that I will not be approving this invoice. Thank you.
Thank you, um, but it was also brought up at the last meeting with the lawyer on the phone and it was asked, a consensus was asked at that time, would you approve his invoice? And I think everyone, well, if I'm wrong, everyone said yes.
No.
No.
All you all did not.
And from what I understand, his total bill's going to be almost twenty thousand dollars.
But you, but you didn't, you didn't tell him that he would get a payment?
No.
All right, we'll run back to, to, to the minute, because I do believe that the minister stated that when he asked, because he asked him, um, we had a conference call and asked, he asked that you pay his, his first payment. And I took a, I took a consensus and everyone said, yes, they will pay.
You took a consensus to move forward with the case, Mr. Mayor.
I took a consensus for him to get paid.
I'm just one person, I'm only.
Okay, well, we're not going to debate as you say, but so you don't want to pay that, that bill?
No.
We have a comment.
When I'm reviewing that bill, when I'm reviewing the bill, there's no details. We've asked for details on this and he has not provided it. I looked at this one, there's no details.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, to trustee Williams rebuttal, I mean, to her, well, to rebuttal to her. So I understand the invoice for two thousand, eight hundred dollars is on the agenda, but also the second item is also a sixteen thousand dollar payment to IMRF from a mistake the previous administration made. And it's the second payment, so actually the payment in total is thirty-two thousand dollars that was not budgeted for, that was not a mistake on our part, but because of mistakes in the past. So therefore, we talk about saving money, that's thirty thousand dollars right there that we could have saved, but therefore we can't because of prior administration mistakes. So, um, I don't see anybody saying anything about that payment on the, uh, on the accounts payable either. I won't approve it. I, I, what, can I tell you?
Are you asking to table something?
Okay, you're talking about the, Mr. Menesworth Retirement Accelerated Payment for his second payment, is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Was that, was that not done in 2018?
No.
When was it done?
That was the second payment, the first payment was like 2016. That was the second payment. It says his second payment, the first one was in 2016. We didn't know about his second payment until just now. We didn't even know about the first one. I didn't know about the first one. But, uh.
I have a comment.
We're still, is there a comment in regards to this IMRF?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Only, I just wondered when you finished.
We have a comment as far as the IMRF payment of six, almost sixteen thousand.
I have a comment about the IMRF payment.
You're asking to, to table this? Is that what you're asking? Oh, okay.
My comment is how can you table an item after the motion has already been put on the floor to approve? You, you, you know, this, I think we need more instruction from the attorney because this is just getting out of hand. There's a motion and a second, and this discussion can be held, but you can't table during the middle of another motion. And if I understood you correctly, because I could hardly hear you, it sounded like now you want to table an item. You can vote no for that item, like I said, I'm going to do with other invoices, but to say you want to table now, I think that is too late.
Trustee, so you can hear me now? Uh, I hope that you can hear me. Uh, I wish I could table. I can't table it right now. There's a motion on the floor already, I know that. I took Robert Rules of Order just like you have. So therefore, I know what I can't table and not table at what point in time. I wish I could table, but I'm not going to. So therefore, I'm not going to table this and I don't want to, but I can't right now.
Okay.
Therefore, Mayor could call a roll if he wants to.
I have a comment.
Is it regards to IMRF?
No, I, I thought we, I thought they were doing their thing down there, so we don't have to move on.
Is there anything to do with the invoice we've been talking about? Is there any other, is there any other comment?
Yeah, we got other comments on other items.
Okay, the, um, the motion on the floor was to pass the accounts payable for August 13th, um, 2019.
And, okay.
It was motion and second.
Let me ask you, can I ask you something? Because there's one thing on here that I do not. I want to pass the rest of it, but not the, the one item. So at that point, how do we do this because?
Okay, so you're asking to, okay, that's when I asked a question.
Right, I mean, there's only one thing on here, but the rest I want to.
Okay, so you have, so you're saying you have, but in order to do that, your trustees, to take it off, we just can't take it off that way.
And I understand.
So it has to be either voted yes or no, and then if it's voted down, you want to make a, a motion. As trustee Williams did to pay X, Y, and Z, we can do that. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
So at this point, if we vote no, if we want, why do I involve this?
No, well.
You know what I'm saying, because you've already got a second to approve this whole thing.
I got, I got, I got a motion to second.
Right, and I, and I've got one item that I cannot want to pay, I want to pay the rest. So once we vote no, if I want to vote no on this, and then there's a motion made to pay the rest of the accounts.
Well, you have to make another motion to do that.
And that's what I'm asking.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll call the roll on the accounts payable for August 13th as it stands.
No, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Okay, a comment. Now, is, is my understanding that you want to count, we want to pay, approve the whole accounts payable with the exception of?
I didn't ask for the check.
So we're going to pay the, so how are we going to remove the invoices? We have to ask for an exception, right?
Well, go back. First of all, I asked to approve the accounts payable for that, for this, a new account payable. It was second. I asked for any questions. Now, if you want to remove something, then it has to be removed after this particular item is voted on. If it's voted up, then it's voted up, and if it's voted down, then you can make another motion to approve it with, with the corrections that you have.
Okay, well, at this.
What, they were all the accounts payable?
Yes, it was payable, accounts payable, correct. I'm sorry, yes, it was. Again.
And right now, uh, since we, you asked for comments, then I could just say my comments on the accounts payable.
No.
No. I don't understand what you're saying, your comments, it, it, the, the.
You asked for comments.
I did ask for comments.
Mm-hmm.
What's your comment?
Okay, my comment for accounts payable is regarding to the lab group. Six invoices for twenty-eight hundred dollars or so.
Are you asking to have them removed?
No, I, I just want to make a comment on it, okay? Uh, these, uh, this particular attorney was, never got an engagement letter. Uh, it was never approved by the board, so, um, I'm questioning whether or not we should pay this. We don't know what we're paying for, what they are authorized to do, so.
Remember I asked you, remember I asked you just now, were you asking to remove? And you said no.
No, I, I want them paid, but I just want this comment on there.
Oh, okay.
Cause, so I don't want them to keep going on doing the same thing they're, they're not supposed to be doing. They should be aware, because if I'm not mistaken, there was a letter telling them they only supposed to be doing adjudication, but it seems like to me we're paying them for everything else. I want to know when they're just stop doing, and start doing adjudication again. Are we paying for everything or just adjudications?
Is that your comment? Is that your?
Yeah, well, that's sort of a, a question I want to ask. Are we paying for adjudication or?
And you, you, you guys come into village every day. You, 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 you look at accounts payable religiously every week. If there's questions about anything like that, why aren't they at that particular time asked? So we wait until we have the board meeting to bring this up? And it sounds to me like it's, I mean, why don't we, we can get these questions answered all day we're here.
Mr. Mayor.
So if you have a, if you have a question about who asked what or what happened, we can show it to you, but for right now, it just needs for me to come out here and bring you documentation and anticipate you're going to ask this question is ludicrous. There's no way in world I would know what you're getting ready to ask.
Mr. Mayor, I sent you three text messages requesting engagement letters for the lab group.
We're, we're, we're in the middle of a motion, not even going to have to debate.
I'm not debating, I'm just telling you a fact. I, I sent you three text messages, you asked me about the lab group, you never responded.
Any, any other questions? Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Bell.
No.
Trustee Brewer.
No.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Dezen.
No.
Trustee Todd.
No.
Trustee Williams.
No.
Okay, payroll and accounts payable are not paid, thank you.
Can I make a motion? No, Mr. Mayor, that's not what we said.
Who, who's we said?
We were, you've said yourself, Mr. Mayor, if the motion fails, then we could bring it back.
Okay.
Now, we can do this, I mean, we are adults that can handle this.
That don't sound like it, because you're going to do an argument.
I think we can do this, Mr. Mayor.
All you're doing is arguing. That's all you're doing is arguing.
The motion failed.
It seems like that's all you want to do every week.
Mr. Mayor, may we be? You, you're, there.
That what?
Can I have a copy of this tape first thing tomorrow to send to the Attorney General's office? Well, maybe not first thing tomorrow, but as soon as possible, please. Because we don't know how to run the meeting and the Attorney General needs to know that. Yes, you don't need to know how to.
We don't. Who was that meeting?
Mr. Mayor, you just told her when the motion fails, then we can call a motion back. You just said it yourself.
Make, make, what motion do you want?
To make a motion to pay the accounts payable and the invoices that are remaining on the, for the payroll. That's my motion.
Okay, what is that? What I want?
We make a motion to pay accounts payable and payroll minus Barnes and Thornburg.
I'm asking her to make the motion.
We do this, can I do this?
Yes, because you made it that way.
Okay. I'll make, can, can I make a motion to pay payroll with the exception of Barnes and Thornburg?
Accounts payable.
We don't, we, uh. I'd like to make a motion to pay payroll and separate it from, never mind.
I made a, I was making a motion and I got interrupted. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the payroll and all accounts payable except for the Barnes and Thornburg invoice. That is my motion.
Nope, I have a second.
Second.
Moved by, um, trustee Williams, seconded by trustee, um, Todd, that accounts payable, all, and disbursement, all except for, um, Barnes and Thornburg. Barnes and Thornburg be approved.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes, yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Quinn.
Yes.
Trustee...
Yes.
I have received motion to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of general obligation bonds, refunding bonds, alternative revenue source, and one or more series of the villages of South village, Cook County, Illinois, in an aggregate trustable amount not to exceed fifteen million nine thousand for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the village and paying cost of issuance of the bonds. I accept the motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Motion to approve resolution accepted and granted authorizing authorization entry into commitment and program funding agreement and designation of signed authority for the Illinois Housing Development Authority. I accept the motion.
So...
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. Any questions?
I just got a quick question. It says Exhibit A, and there's nothing attached, so if I could get that and attach it to this. Thank you.
In addition, I make, uh... No.
I don't think so, because I don't remember.
Okay, we'll have to...
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
On the second page and...
Just a signature, please. Attached is Exhibit A. It's not attached. But if you can, if you know, if you're release community, just put it in my box. Thank you.
Who else have a question?
Well, I had a comment. For future reference, as we go on page two on the resolution, it indicates that the mayor is gonna be signing authority for now on and future references. Shouldn't that include the village administrator whenever we have assigned authority for any documents?
Always the mayor.
Well, we only have that one person. You don't have a financial director, it's just the one parent, the mayor.
Even if you have a financial director, you have... You have to enter a contract until a contract with your mayor. That's your... That's... You're gonna have to go for your...
No, I'm taking your words. I'm asking you a question.
The mayor has a contract, I mean, contract, yes.
Okay, so...
Not the village administrator.
I just...
Or the financial director.
Uh-huh. I said, could they be included? I just said...
They're included, they're looking at it, but they don't sign, no.
Okay, that's my question.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Quinn.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Motion's carried. Motion to approve the purchase of the skin steamer equipment and attachment of fifty-four thousand as was recommended by Director Kevin Wells.
So...
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Juzinski. Any questions?
A comment. Just wanted to make a comment that he was willing to forego the backhoe for ninety thousand dollars in place of this, if I remember correctly. Um... I agree. I understand. I just want to make that comment.
I have a comment. Mr. Mayor, I'm in agreement with approving this, but for future reference with the three G, we approve that payment without waiving the bid or anything like that. Now, I understand that we're gonna approve this without having a bid, but according to Illinois State statute, anything over twenty-five thousand, I think it is, don't quote me on that one, it should be some kind of bid out there, but I understand this is the lowest cost that we might get for this equipment, but to follow what we start to doing with addressing ordinances and the way things are supposed to be doing, we should have an ordinance first to waive the bid process and then have another ordinance to approve the actual purchase of the, uh, equipment. That's how it's been done in the past unless it's changed. We should wait, you know, the bid process. And in fact, it's a... I have a booklet that says we should wait the bid process first.
Okay, as the meeting last week explained to you, why we didn't, or did he not explain to you why we didn't go into the bid process?
That's not what I'm talking about, Mr. Mayor. I'm saying for future references that we should waive the bid process because we need to start doing the things, doing things the way this should be done.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm not... Did you say two things the same? Are you saying that we should waive the bid process or we should not waive the bid process?
We should from now on.
We should not.
We should waive the bid process if we're not gonna, if it's over twenty-five thousand dollars.
You're saying that we should waive it if it's over twenty-five dollars?
Mr. Mayor, let us go back and get it twisted.
No, I'm not...
Okay.
But you just kept saying that we should waive the bid process.
Mr. Mayor, previously, this board and prior boards, whenever they wanted to buy something, they generally do an ordinance to waive the bid process, okay? I want to start continuing doing that, because that's the way it's been done in the past. And then, once we waive the bid process, then we put another ordinance in to actually pay for whatever we trying to buy that's over twenty-five thousand dollars. I'm asking us to start that process again where we waive the bid process for anything over twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, I think, I don't quote me, maybe get the attorney to find out how much we supposed to do, but we're not supposed... We're supposed to put a bid for in for something, you know, to waive the bid.
Let me ask you this. Do you want... Let me ask you this. Do you want to put that on for next week, then you can address that at the committee meeting to go over that, since you seem to know how it goes, to go over that process of how we go about waiving the bid process? So we can... We waive the bid processes and how we go about doing it. Do you want to do that?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so you want to do that?
Yeah.
That's Mr. Mayor.
We start... The... And then your question pertaining to... To this, uh, this particular motion?
Yes, in reference to what trustee Brewer was saying. I totally agree. It's a great idea to put it on the next committee agenda, but I do want the public to understand why we did it this time. It was discussed in the last week's meeting that the person that we got this piece of equipment through already goes through an extensive bidding process prior to bringing the quotes to us, and we're getting it at thirty percent less than what we would have had to pay had we gone out for our own bids. So yes, I do agree, though, that moving forward, we should put a bidding process out there, and if we're gonna waive bidding, then it should be done as a board. Thank you for bringing that up, trustee Brewer, but just wanted the public to know why we did go with this without a bid process. Thank you.
So next week, we will be talking and discussing bid processes and how we should go about doing that, and I think trustee Brewer said she's gonna bring information so we can go over that. Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Ty.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski.
Yes.
Motion's carried. To obtain a motion override the mayor burden of veto made against July twenty-second relating to the board's approval of an ordinance authorizing expenditures pending passage of an annual budget and appropriation ordinance.
So move.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, second by trustee Ty. Any questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can I ask the attorney a question? For... Mr. Attorney, after this Friday, there's a payroll. Are we... Can we legally pay bills as if this will be ninety days plus past the end of our previous fiscal year? Can we legally pay those bills with a stopgap measure? So we can continue to pay payroll in all expenditures until we pass natural appropriations? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, I spoke to, uh, Mr. Fish by the meeting, and I indicated to him, and I believe it was stated before, there's always been a little confusion with the village. It's two separate systems. You have to operate under either a budget system or appropriation system. Everything that we want to add to the village, you've always operated under the budget system. That's when you post a budget, you put it in the paper, it's available for public inspection. Completely different way to operate. See, the budget appropriation is not both one or the other. Under the budget system, you pass the stopgap ordinance, which allows you to operate under your existing budget until you pass the new budget. It's very similar to the state before of what the federal government does and our state government does.
But in the past, haven't we passed appropriations and not a budget? I mean, we've passed appropriations last year and in previous years. We pass appropriations. We don't pass a budget. I thought, Mr. Mayor, if you could...
I believe with all due respect, there's been confusion. I can put together a memo on it. It's two different systems, and to call one if you're operating under the other is confusing. You're having a budget here. You had a budget meeting. You put together a budget. You posted it in a paper, newspaper, that it's gonna be open for inspection, and then you're gonna load out a budget. You don't do that in the appropriation system.
Right, but did we... Did we or did we not last year pass appropriations?
Yeah, I know what you're saying. I wasn't involved today. I believe what you asked was documents that said budget and appropriation, which...
It can't be both.
It cannot be both.
So...
Okay, I was gonna say, since I'm the trustee here, we've always had both. We passed the budget, and then at the same meeting, we passed an appropriation so we can extend the next amount during that year, and that's since two thousand and six. So now you're saying that we don't need a... We don't need an appropriation. We just pass a budget. And I don't never... I never saw an ordinance stating that we're under that type of system, just a budget system. So why are we doing both? Because we had... We... I've always saw both, and I'm just wondering how that's possible, how it... So what you're saying is you're extending the budget until such time the board has a budget or to their agreement, basically is what you're saying. But it can last for years, correct?
Hopefully not.
No, I didn't say hopefully. I'm saying, but it can last for years. You can operate under the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget for years until one is passed, correct?
Well, at some point, the village would not be able to pay certain bills if there's increases.
Okay.
And increases such as funding for your pension funds, other payments that go off your labor contracts. If there's any increases, wages or insurance.
Okay.
If you stay under your current budget, that increase you won't be able to meet. So at some point, you're gonna have to do something.
So that's what I'm...
I mean, that could be right, but I guess we say it could go on for years, but then some items wouldn't be paid in order for you to make up for the increase in insurance costs and labor costs.
So you're saying that we have to look at a certain cost. Safe residence is fifteen million dollars. So once we exceed that, no bills are paid after that. If the budget... If the old budget was fifteen mil, and we exceed that within another... Within a year, we wouldn't be able to pay any bills after that.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, and I wish Mr. Fish was here, because he's more into the numbers and of the accounts.
No, I'm just... I'm just showing that. I don't know the numbers. I'm just asking.
If you have money to pay your bills, you pay your bills.
But then you can't... You can't use the argument that we can't pay this because we don't have money. If we have the money, we can pay this. Because I'm just asking. I'm just saying, if we have the money to pay this bill, then we can pay that bill. We can't use the argument that we do have that money, we can't use the argument that we can't pay this bill because we don't have the money. We have the money.
If it's an item that's been approved by the board or a contract that's been approved by the board, you have the money, certainly you're obligated to pay.
Okay. So my question would be, then, we have budget here. So if you have this... How long does this stopgap last?
Until you pass the next budget.
Until we pass the budget. So if we don't pass a budget, it'll stay in effect until the budget is passed.
You're operating under last year's budget?
Correct. I'm saying, but it's... Until the new budget is passed, we operate under the old one. Until the new one is passed, regardless of when it's passed, correct?
Correct.
And so therefore, so now, although we don't need the appropriation, we don't need to pass appropriation bill or...
You're under a budget system based upon our review of the finances, how they've been dealt here in the village. I can put together a memo.
I just never heard. I mean, I've never questioned it, but I just never heard that. I mean, why do we do an appropriation if we don't... We had to do it past the budget? I mean, what was the reason for it? I thought the reason for appropriation is so we don't go over, and we have to come back to the board and approve an amendment to the budget to exceed the appropriation. That's what I was gonna be...
See, I... To be honest, I don't know. I know it's been like this for a long, long time. My feeling is, it goes back to possibly when Mr. Dietrich was here or others. Then they had a budget, and somebody along the line said, like, we'd like to see what's being appropriated, where the monies are gonna be spent, and they meshed them together, but there's two separate systems. And I believe, based on our review, that the village has always been under the budget system.
Okay, because I'm... Now, I'm, you know, I'm trying to figure out. Because my next question would be is, uh... If you pass a budget, can you later on amend that budget during that budget time?
To do certain things. If there's a surplus, you should have a public hearing declare that there's a surplus. You can't add additional positions into the budget.
Correct. So if the budget, if we're going by last fiscal year's budget, and that position wasn't in there, can you add it to this? Can you add it now, even though we don't have a budget passed?
You're still operating under the old budget.
Yeah.
Now, if you're referring to a position such as the village administrator position, which was brought out by state statute, it has to be put in the next budget.
So you can add...
There's certain... There's certain positions that the state legislature has allowed the village board to contract with, one of which is a village administrator. In the language, it says, the subsequent budget, whatever cost it is to hire and contract with a village administrator, for instance, it shall be in the next budget. It's mandatory. It's completely enforceable under the law.
So you can add a position that wasn't prior to that under what you're saying right now. So therefore, you can add a position that wasn't budgeted in the last budget to right now, even though the new budget hasn't been passed?
No, it's mandating that in the next budget that you're gonna pass, it has to be in that budget, in only certain positions.
Okay, but another question was, can you add that position now, even though it wasn't in the budget?
No. You can't... You can't add another position to your current budget, the next budget. And it makes sense if you change your form of government, or if there's changes, you know, in the middle of your fiscal year, the law allows you to make those changes, but it mandates that then individual, that position is gonna be in the next budget. It's mandatory. You can't go back and change or amend the past budget or budget year, continuing on until you pass the budget of that year.
With the old... Working under the old budget now, under the current budget, can you delete positions?
No.
Okay, and also, under that budget, you just stated that we can add that position because it's mandated or it's...
No, you cannot add that position. The state law says that if you hire, there's a handful of positions. If you hire one of those positions during your budget year, you're mandated that position has to be in your next budget. If not, that person or anybody could run to court, and they're gonna win and get it placed into the budget by a judge. by a judge.
I wanted to say from past experience since two thousand and seventeen, and then also, uh, from a historical perspective with review of what was taking place where finances are concerned in the past, uh, typically, the village of Saw Village presents an ordinance to approve appropriations, that is how we do it for a particular fiscal year, after we go through all of the whereas's and everything, then we get to the therefore, the recommendation would be, and then whatever is your bottom line of your budget, is what is placed in that ordinance, that is what we typically have done in the past, so that is how we translate from the appropriations piece, this is what we're appropriating, but then your final line, not the entire budget, but it's just usually just a little small chart is included under that therefore, and that's what trustees will vote on, and then that is what's filed with, uh, the county.
I mean, the lawyer just stated that we didn't have to do that, so I'm, I'm, listen, I heard what you stated, and I heard what the lawyer stated, so I don't have that third person to, but, um, okay, um, the lawyer, the lawyer, attorney stated that we cannot operate under last year's budget, cannot add or subtract anything from it unless we voted on it, and, um, I, I'm not a lawyer. No, the motion on the floor is still the, the motion on the floor, these are questions, so I'm going to go back to the motion on the floor to override the veto, uh, and, um, ask for a vote.
There was a motion in a second, right?
There was a motion in a second.
Williams' motion, I just missed a second.
Okay.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Duzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
What'd you say?
Motion's carried, motion to override mayor's version veto dated Jan, July twenty-second thousand and nineteen relating to the board's motion approving a resolution declaring the contract of the villages, uh, Saw Village Human Resource Consultant void, um, I do have a question on that, um. Um, can the board vote on something that's in, that's in court right now, sir?
That is a separate legal proceeding, uh, that's pending in the, the Chancery Division of Certain Court, this is to override your veto under motion to, uh, to declare the, the employer contract void.
Right, I'm saying, and that's in, if, if, can we declare that void and the, and the courts are ruling on that?
Yes.
We can still, we can still, they can still override that, that, that particular veto, even though the courts have to rule again, that's my question, have you?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Todd, any question?
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Duzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
And motion is carried, uh, motion to override, uh, mayor's version veto dated July twenty-second relating to the board's resolution terminating the human resource consultant statement of work.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Brewer, any question? Now, clerk.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
No.
Trustee Duzinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
I do, um, Mister, uh, McGrath, I do have, like I said, back to G item, if the courts move different, what happens to this?
The, the matter in, uh, in court pertains to legality, the, the, of the, the contract.
Yes.
And if the court declares that the contract is annulity or void, the case is over, uh, the next phase, if the court were to find that the contract is valid, then it would, the only issue remaining is, uh, the severance clause.
But what was, about the motion that was just approved, what would happen with that? I have a G about the, uh, contract, uh, being void, what would happen then, if, if the court say that it was, it was legal, what happens with this motion, what, what, that's, that was the reason why I asked the question, because we're making a motion on something that hasn't been resolved yet.
Then at that time I would, I, I guess I requested it be brought back to the board in an update on what happened in litigation, and have the board reconsider their vote.
But if the board doesn't, that's why I was wondering why you did that, if the board doesn't vote in favor of that, if the court says that, then see what happens, that's what.
What the court, uh, the court's ruling would control.
Okay, uh, item I, um, executive session, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel pending litigation, collective bargaining, uh, board members of real estate with plenty compensation.
Personnel, I'm not sure if you said personnel, but I just wanted to make sure.
That, that thing I said.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I'm still working on my last motion.
I have the motion.
So moved.
Moved the second, any, any, uh, oh, um, it was moved by trustee Williams, seconded by trustee Bell. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to reiterate, so moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by, uh, Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Brewer, all in favor?
Aye.